Now it's time for citizens comments. Comments from the public are limited to items listed on the agenda. Speakers will be allowed three minutes. Please begin your comments by stating the spell of your name and providing your city of address. Are there any citizens comments? I only have one bill card.
Good evening, my name is Tricia Drilling Phelps. That's P-A-T-R-I-C-I-A, Drilling, D-R-I-L-O-I-N-G, Phelps, P-H-A-L-P-S. Okay, so, good evening council and hospital board trustees over here. You have been given tonight, both tonight and yesterday, the email, a community letter, which is intended to be sent to the California Department of Public Health. And I've come before you this evening in the hopes that the city council, including staff or Mr. Carlini, would sign this letter tonight to be sent in as soon as possible. I believe we can all agree the hospital and its clinics provide vital healthcare access and services to the 80,000 residents of Tulare Local Healthcare District. Without its services, our residents suffer, especially those without transportation, including elderly and children. So this letter is a plea to the Department of Public Health to approve the reopening of facilities as soon as possible. By signing this letter, you will show your support, that there is concern and care for our community's health and well-being. I would like to now read this letter aloud. This is to Jean Chang, District Manager, California Department of Public Health in Bakersfield. Dear Ms. Chang, as citizens of Tulare and surrounding communities, we the undersigned wish to express our grave concern regarding the current suspension of our hospital operations. While we understand the issues which have precipitated this event and that the California Department of Public Health is not responsible for this suspension, it is critical to our community and our surrounding area that our hospital and clinics reopen as soon as possible in order for our residents to have timely and effective access to care. We strongly urge CDPH, that's California Department of Public Health, to utilize all available means at its disposal to expedite this request. Realizing that CDPH has been carefully monitoring this situation, we trust that CDPH is in agreement with our community that the reopening of the facilities for Tulare Local Healthcare District is a high priority for public health and safety for our 80,000 area residents to avert a healthcare crisis. Access to care is critical. These alarming statistics far exceed those statewide. Twenty-seven percent of Tulare County residents live in poverty. Eleven percent of Tulare County residents are over age sixty-five. Thirty percent of Tulare County residents over age sixty-five live in rural areas. Thirty-one percent of Tulare County residents are under age eighteen. Eight percent of Tulare County residents are under age five. Thirty-seven percent of Tulare County residents under age eighteen live in poverty. Forty-three percent teen pregnancy rate in Tulare County. Upon reopening Tulare District Hospital, will we afford the opportunity and have the distinct advantage to avail itself of expertise from an established and highly rated quality tertiary care hospital headquartered in the Central Valley? Community medical centers will provide the fundamental and experienced guidance to begin our public hospital turnaround. We are excited for what the future holds, a skilled management team alongside the board from our district board and the vast majority of our residents. Doctors and staff stand at the ready, willing and able to return and revive our once vibrant hospital and improve its quality while expanding its stature within the South Valley area. It is our greatest hope that you will recognize the significance of the length of time of closure in influencing the ultimate success of our hospital and in doing so, put this reopening on an accelerated fast track. We support our hospital, its new managers, its doctors and staff, and our current board. Thank you for your utmost consideration, respectfully concerned Tulare area leaders. Thank you.
Are there any more, anyone else from the, from the public that would like to speak?
Good evening, my name is Trevor Lewis, I'm here with the Office of Supplemental Mountains. I have a letter here for the Board of Directors and as well as copies. Council, I would read this. Dear Board of Directors, thank you for your recent contact with my office regarding your formal request for an audit of the Tulare Regional Medical Center. I recognize the important request and would like to express my strong support for the initiation of the requested audit. As you are aware, there is a long history of questionable activities associated with the management of bond funds by Tulare Regional Medical Center and the Healthcare Conglomerate Association. Given the recent shutdown of our hospital and the implication associated with the closure, I believe that a formal audit conducted by a state auditor or auditor is needed and appropriate. As such, I am now publicly demanding that an extended investigation. My office has been in contact with several organizations, including the Department of Public Health and Senator Gene Floyd's office. In all instances, we have expressed our support for the initiation of the audit and have committed any resources necessary for expediting the process. Furthermore, Senator Floyd has expressed his intent of submitting a formal request to the Joint Legislative Audit Committee. I pledge my commitment to supporting your effort in all aspects. Please be aware that I am fully dedicated into helping you and the Tulare Local Healthcare District resolve this process as quickly as possible. Feel free to contact my office with any questions or ways in which we may assist you and the district further. Thank you for your dedication and service to the people of Tulare.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak?
My name is Alberto Aguirre, now of Tulare since nineteen eighty-five. And I'm going to go ahead, first of all, Honorable Mayor Kaufman Billings, members of the Tulare Council and Honorable Colonel Fitz and the President of the House. The purpose of today is to go ahead and talk about a comment that was made by our mayor, Kaufman Billings, lending the, 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 the bond oversight committee for not being accountable to how the money was spent. I recall specifically when you indicated, John, well, this was my fault, that we could not account for the eighty-five million dollars that was spent, the eighty-five million dollars that the members of the community had approved acting two thousand and five. So, in order to go ahead and educate the members of the city council and anybody else in the public as to what really happened, I brought some documentation to go ahead and give support as to how we tried, specifically me, in writing, well documented, to go ahead and get the information that was necessary to do my job. What I've brought and anything that I go ahead and give to the board is public record, so anybody can request a copy of this information. The more informed you are, the better off you're going to be about what has happened and the same problems that we experienced with the bond oversight committee. The directors have been experiencing over the hospital since they became a board. And that is, they're not given the financial data to be able to do their job. And what I've brought with me, and I'm going to go ahead and give to your clerk, I've brought, I'm bringing with me the bond oversight committee charter. That was established to indicate what our duties and responsibilities were. I received this document on August twenty-third, two thousand and thirteen. Now, if I could think about it, the bond was passed in two thousand and five, and it wasn't until two thousand and thirteen that they came out with a charter as to what our duties and responsibilities were on that board. I wasn't on the board yet, okay? But I'm going to go ahead and I'm going to submit that as data for the public. On October sixteenth, I went ahead and submitted a report, five pages. It went to Sherri Bell, the president of the board, Parma Tumaw, the vice chair, Richard Torres, the treasurer, Rosalina B. T. Secretary, and Lita Gatti, the board members. These are the individuals that went in for the time. This is five pages that I submitted to them and the title, Breach of Trust, regarding the corporate integrity agreement. All right? And on there, I go ahead and identify the discrepancies that I'm going to go ahead and noted when I'm going to reply to reports. Numerous discrepancies, numerous amounts of money that was in the spend moving forward. So then I'll go ahead and provide you with all the data for this quite a bit. On September fifteenth, two thousand and fifteen, I submitted the letter to Benny Benzidi, who is the CEO of Health Help Group, again, explained to him what the purpose of the bond oversight committee was, what we were entitled to do, and how we were not able to provide it with the financial data to do our job. All right? Then on September the thirtieth, I submitted a letter to Sherri Bell, the chair of the board, again, explained to her what our purpose was when they went ahead and did both this charter. On October twenty-ninth, I let her respond through the attorney, Bruce Green, telling me that I was not entitled to that information. You understand what I'm saying? I was not entitled to the financial data that I was requesting to be able to do a job. That's from the attorney, that's from lack of right. So, whenever you go ahead and just go and tell me that it's my fault that we can't account for the eighty-five million dollars, my recommendation to you and to the public is to read the grand new report that indicates, out of power shame, that indicates why we cannot go ahead and monitor and know how the money was spent. They cannot do their job for the same reason, they're not being provided with the financial data to make the decisions that necessary to be able to function. Just like you, Farrah, if you were given a fire truck identity, you'd have to make sure, okay, you've got to have the equipment to do your job. All right? Thank you very much. I want this interview to do the record.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak?
My name is Deanna Morris Siles, who resides here in Tulare. I didn't plan on speaking tonight, but after Alberto spoke, I thought it was important to say this. In two thousand and seven, I also could not receive financial data. You have to be prepared for how ugly this is going to be for our community. I tried to bring the bill in, I tried other times, and in this time, this board is going to make sure that this happens. We're going to have good quality healthcare, and it doesn't mean that this stature is not providing good quality healthcare. But what has been happening is the assets of this institution have been raked out of it. So there are things that are not being fixed, they're not looking appropriate equipment, doctors are being pushed away, and if we don't come together as a community, all of you are going to help for part of the problem, just like I blame myself for leaking the war in two thousand and eight because I left this mockery of what was happening in our community. So you need to really open your eyes, because this is not going to be pleasant for all of us, but this board over here is going to get this solved. And I ask that you support them in this process, and that you sign this letter, and you come together as a community. And before you make comments in the newspaper, you probably really ought to learn what's going on. I advise you to talk to the manager. Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else in the board who wants?
My name is Juanito Donaire, I'm a staff at the hospital, I'm a surgeon. If you compare, like, I work both here and at Cuieta Delta. One difference between the two hospitals is really the demographics. Hogs, Cuieta Delta has a much wealthier community, so when you complain about the bad financial situation, part of it's just people we're dealing with just don't have the finances that they do up in Visalia. It's just one of the disadvantages. But looking at the people here, we've got great people here. I enjoy coming down here to work, because we've got a lot of good people, and we really need to maintain the hospital for the community. There's a fellow by name Steve Jaws, I don't know if you've heard of him, he's from my company called Apple. And he, he built, he was building a new store called the Apple Store. People said, someone visited, he said, "Well, you're crazy, I think that's not going to work." He said, "Oh, I think it will." He turned his company, his store, from a fast, his rise in company, going from zero sales to million dollar sales in the United States. And somebody asked him about it, he said, "What did, what, how did you design it? What did you do?" He says, "He said, 'What you have to do is you have to have, the buildings should be seeing something.' When you walk in a building, what does it say? When you walk into Tulare District Hospitals, fifty, sixty, eighty-year-old hospital, whatever it is, it looks like, it's old, it's the oldest hospital in the community, it doesn't say, it doesn't have a lot of pride. If you don't have a lot of pride, you walk into a building that looks like it's that old." Now, I'm vice president of the Liberty Elementary School Board, and we built a brand-new building. And our enrollment went from, our enrollment basically crippled when we brought a brand-new, shiny building. Not only did the students want to come, the students had more pride in the building, more pride in the school, and some of the faculty. The faculty would go ahead and, they were, they were really proud of the school. So I think what we really need to do is get a board, we've got the Apple Hospital building that had to be paid for. If we can get the same staff we had for Compton, or even, not as good staff as we used to have, of course, there's some out here, and we can have a nice-looking building and come out fresh, and a new start, new people, not the, the new graders, the last five, we've had Jerry Boyder, Bob Montian, Sean Lukey, twice, and now I'm talking to Benny Benzidi, and we've had problems with a lot, not a lot of respect for the leadership in the hospital. If we come in, we're standing to you, we've got a new hospital, new administration, we're going to make this a place that, um, you're going to come to, the people from around the area are going to come to. We're all as there, and we're as functioning, and make it a real hospital, and we can really make something for Tulare. Two, one, zero.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Edward Henry, I reside here in Tulare. Listen, this is the overhead work I'm using. Should I give you some heads up? What I have here is a, is a report out of Chico State University from the Center for Economic Development that was completed in August of two thousand and fifteen. This report, this report was commissioned by Benny Benzidi. And it was often used, data out of this report was often used on his PowerPoint and also Alan German's PowerPoint presentations when they were trying to make a legitimate bond pass. The title of this report was "The Economic and Fiscal Impacts of the Tulare Regional Medical Center." It's a twenty-two-page report, I'll just quote some figures from the executive summary. It talks about the loss, the economic loss to the county, an economic output of about fifty-eight point four million dollars annually, and to the city of Tulare specifically, about eight and a half million dollars. Now, Mr. Carlini was quoted in the newspaper saying that we've had a fifty million dollar loss to the city of Tulare. I don't know if that was on a annual basis or over a certain time period, but certainly this figure, eight point five million dollars, was sixty-seven times less than what was quoted in the newspaper. When that, when you break that down, just look at it on a daily basis, that would be about twenty-three thousand million dollars a day that the hospital, Tulare, and that might have lost. One of the other things that looked at in this was, and this should be a bit of attention to your council, is the migration, the out migration, and the in-migration to the cities. We talked about the out migration, being the loss of healthcare workers due to the closing of the hospital, it should close permanently. The immigration was, was people looking to possibly retire here or come to this, found cities and businesses, and not have a substantial healthcare system. And so, one of the things that they looked at, and this was looking over the thirteen year horizon to the year twenty thirty, that it says that as much as ninety-four million dollars in foregone economic output were lost as a result of closing this hospital. So anyway, this is the only, this is the only study that I'm aware of that is what directly at this local healthcare district and what it would cost economically. The board members of the hospital board have copies of this. It's in the public domain originally, and when I talked to the authors, I have it going to Chico State, I was told that it was a non-disclosure agreement. I think that is no longer in effect. I talked to one of the gentlemen just before coming to the meeting tonight, and he says that it's no longer in effect, to the best of his knowledge. And so, it's out on the valid voice, for those of you who would like to get it, I think, before we start figuring what this is going to cost, without having substantial data in the back of your, out of your, this Chico State. One last thing I'd like to point out is, specifically to Evolutions, there's a lot of people who use Evolutions, and a lot of people were very disappointed when that closed, myself included. In talking with one of the individuals at the front desk, these are unofficial figures, there's about twenty-eight hundred membership there at Evolutions, that represents about seven thousand members if you do the division, it's about two and a half members of people or individuals per membership. I tried to go through and figure out, okay, what's the monthly average membership fees? I'm running with fifty to eighty dollars, like, and I, since we received the tracing, we pay sixty dollars a month. But you can see right there, if you do the math, that if the average is fifty dollars a month, it's about one point six eight million gross annual gross revenue, remember, from Evolutions, and if it's eighty dollars a month, it's about two point six nine. That is pretty much a cash account for the hospital right there, and I think it was the only one that had a positive cash flow over the last twelve months or so. Anyway, getting Evolutions opened up again for me and a lot of other people is pretty good, although certainly healthcare and quality healthcare isn't the top of the list, but I tell you, Evolutions is important physically and health as well, it's not the number particularly someone at my age. I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're going to move on to general business. I have no way of recalling. General business item number one is discussion between the boards of the Tulare Local Hospital District and the Tulare City Council, if and how the city may assist the hospital board in opinion of current needs, and requests seeking input on the web from the Tulare City Council to the chairman of the state audit committee to perform a formal audit on the Tulare Local Healthcare District hospital bond and operations and approval of the same. I'll pass to Chairman Norcraft, and he can start by telling us how we got here and what we do though.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, let me thank, I think, all of our board. Appreciate the invitation, we need to do. I think every institution that works for a better Tulare, we just work together, certainly we look forward to a strong-looking relationship with our city council and our hospital board. We have a plan this week to finalize that will improve our state, cause the rejection of the contract to be negative, that does not immediately give us access to the hospital, but it's an important step, a hard way to do that. I think it's very important, in our minds, that the hospital be opened as soon as possible. Every day that goes by, we risk a heart attack, a stroke, an accident, and we have seventy thousand people on the freeway, hundreds of thousands of people traveling on the freeway. We don't have a twenty-four-hour emergency room, and if they need that, and that weighs very heavily, I think, on all of us, and we're working very fast as we can to get that open. Evolutions will be a little easier, probably not as critical, but it doesn't involve state approval, and we're working very fast on that. I was, I'm just amazed how the community can come together. We haven't, we haven't had a hurricane, or a fire, or a shooting, but we've had a catastrophe in our area. And I really think our community will come together today in one meeting, one of the foundations we're approaching for bridge running, prove a hundred thousand dollars that started, that will help us reopen Evolutions. And I have every confidence that this community will come together. We will have a vibrant hospital, we will have a town that we once had, hopefully much of that same town back in our hospital. Hopefully, we'll be an important institution in our community, bringing all the things that are at risk, that I think Mr. Carlini pointed out, that we don't want to lose. In terms of things that we haven't actually asked or talked about, well, we might ask the council, certainly the comment tonight about the request to the state auditor, both, now both of our legislative representatives are supporting that. Certainly, a letter might not be necessary to send it now, but in support of that would be good. A letter addressed by Patty Drilling Phelps tonight would be possible to be supported. Anything, hopefully, we can do as much for you in the future as you can for us, but right now, I think we're in a little worse shape, I think we have to agree. Anything you could do to support that, we'd certainly be very much appreciative. Anybody else want to add to that?
The forty-five-minute decision that the judge read into the record, he said something striking to me, and it stuck with me. He, in his reading, and you can listen to it, Chico Valley Voice has it online, he said that basically, this is not available, but basically what he said was, is, "The voters, the people that are voted, it's their job to decide. If the elected body is doing their job." Now, that's not word for it, basically. And so, I just, I want to point out that we had five, I count five elections. The first was the defeat of the bond, which many of us supported. The third's vote no. We had the election of Kevin Murcraft and Mike Jamaica. Again, sixty-five, sixty-six percent of the vote. Clear message, we had the recall of Dr. Tumaw, eighty-one percent of the vote going to recall Dr. Tumaw. We had the election of Sinobi Perez, seventy-six percent of the vote. So when you think about what should I say, when you think about the results of those elections, you have, you have to put those two together. And the conclusion for me, and this is great, I wanted, is the voters of this district, of this town, are clearly making the judgment call. So... So it's something I think you wouldn't think. I hope we work together. This issue's bigger than any one of us, and I look forward to doing it. I became friends with Jose, and, uh, I know he's been trying to get support from, for a letter from the city council for a while, so I think the proper thing to do is invite us here and check with us directly, but Jose's been right all along. That's, we, what we're asking for tonight is, we wanted that part of the line. Thank you.
Just like to curb it, but board members that just got through expressing here is that, uh, we have been locked out, uh, from our hospital. We've been trying to get our financial statements since January of two thousand seventeen to this date, we still haven't received them. So I'll assume that Mr. Benzini doesn't care to share anything with us, um, we can get some sort of, uh, an idea as to where we stand financially so that we can start moving forward. But, uh, it's been a struggle, but I, I do believe here shortly things will get turned around, and we'll be moving forward because we have some good people that are going to partner with us, as a consultant firm that's advising us, and, uh, I just like to express the, or invite that the council can support us and, and sign this letter that was distributed yesterday, and hopefully, if we come on the word, it will help us, uh, move forward. Thank you.
All right, thank you, guys. Um, I have a couple of questions, and some of the questions that I did, that I feel should be directed to you. So, uh, the sake of course, after those questions, I'm asking. So the first question is simply, how did we get here? Who pulled the license, uh, and is that the reason that the hospital is closed? And I have seven total questions, but I'll ask them one at a time.
Well, that's a pretty easy, uh, question. We were in closed session, uh, last, we could, we went, we, anyway, during that closed session, we were informed by text that ACCA had, had announced to the employees that they were closing the hospital at midnight on October twenty-eighth. Closure of the hospital, uh, would be very punitive and very negative for our community. Would be very difficult to reopen that because, uh, it's a violation of regulations of California Department of Public Health, and do sanctions against us, and the opening, reopening procedures would be very lengthy and expensive. As a result of that, that information, we've applied for suspension of the license, which would be much faster, uh, method of reopening. And I just received, uh, just looked at last night, our suspended license, our, our suspension was approved by the state when we closed. We had a much, much better position to reopen the hospital, as well as the hospital as a result of more actions. ACCA took the action to, um, lay off the employees and close the hospital.
And that was via text message?
So, I'd like to add to that. So, we've been informed for quite a while that, uh, the hospital for a while been at risk of being closed involuntarily, as Kevin mentioned. At, at best, the hospital will take six months to a year, of course, dropping it real quickly. So, would, would you consider the option of allowing that to happen? Or voluntarily suspending the license and maybe get it going in a few weeks to thirty days, who knows, a couple of months? A lot cheaper? And you, at that time, there's a lot of employees that I think lost faith in HCCA, and were communicating that, uh, then online, that they were, what they were intending to do. So it wasn't just a text message, a lot of text messages, different phone calls. So we had plenty of reasons to believe we were the major of the worst actions involuntarily.
And I think we saw the confirmation of that, that same evening, plus the notice that was put out, of the, of the, and the closure by ACCA. That's kind of, Kevin, I don't know how much we're gonna focus on that, but kinda anxious to focus on the future.
Definitely, and then, and then these are just questions that I did, and I can't really answer them because I wasn't, I definitely wasn't a part of the text message chain that was a threat to close the hospital, and I definitely wasn't part of the meeting where you guys decided to suspend the license. There are some members in the public that think we are a part of that decision, and as we're not. So just for clarity, we have this point, you know, and those are good questions to kinda clear them, you know, in a way. So, like you said, my, our next question would be, what is the plan going forward?
Yeah, I kinda summarized that. The plan is that if we finalize, our consultants will be submitted to the state this week. As soon as that's approved, the rejection takes effect, and then there are immediate follow-up steps to that, to, to take possession of the district's property. Uh, we are working with, uh, Whitley is our turnaround consultant, working also with the community medical center, uh, Fresno, and Santee in Fresno, to assist us in reopening the hospital as soon as possible. Of course, we're working very actively with the state department of public health that's , uh, very consistent today.
Is there any opportunity or way that, um, Evolutions can open prior to the hospital?
Yes, I think I've indicated that that's actually an easier process, um, because it doesn't involve the state. It's basically just getting the, getting employees and staff. Until the contract's rejected, we have provided control of the district's property. One of the suggestions I was considering making tonight, uh, HCCA remains in control of the property, all their, all the funds, all the bank accounts, all the keys, all the computer codes, all the financial information. That all needs to be transferred over to our consultants as soon as possible, and that's the expedite, the reopening of both Evolutions and the hospital. ACCA's been paid over twenty million dollars in the last three years. We certainly would urge them to respect our community by assisting in the transition and help us reopen our, our facilities as soon as possible.
Mr. Northcraft, do you have any type of timeline on the rejection of the contracts for the Evolutions and the hospital?
Well, the, the judge's order said no later than November twenty-seventh. We're hoping, sorry, next week?
I can help you.
We're hoping for next week.
And then following the rejection, we can be open, we're hoping to be back open next week? Is that what I'm hearing?
No, there's other steps, and these are the settings that, uh, other things that you have to accomplish. It gets us far along the way to accomplish possessing buildings that have always been in the districts, I mean.
Is there any general expectation just to know when the doors will be open on Evolution? When the doors will be back open on the hospital?
Consultants said a week or two ago, thirty to sixty days, uh, that was unacceptable to us. We're pushing, and we're moving faster than that, because we all have been asking times we have, but Evolutions, again, it's, uh, HCCA said, gave us the fees, gave us the computer programs, gave us the personnel laws, we could open next week.
What is your, what is your communication with HCCA as thus far, in terms of, since October twenty-first, since, since actually you've been on the board, and they've talked to you?
Um, I'm not sure where we wanna go, but, um, I've sent over twenty emails to Dr. Benzini, um, I got a couple nasty letters back from his attorney, I'm hesitant that he has a response. We've had eight meetings in the last two months, he's attended one of those meetings. He's got an attendance tonight, so maybe tonight. We are, our attorneys and our consultants are communicating, I think they'll leave a date later. So there is some communication going on between the staff of ACCA and the district board.
As a, as a council, the, so the short-term goals that can open, uh, Evolutions, and the goals that can open, open the hospital, what can we do as a council to help achieve those goals at a timely manner?
As I said, I think, uh, a motion asking for cooperation from ACCA would go a long way, and if we could, that accomplished, in their minds, they want us to, to help us, so that would be very instrumental. We had hoped for a very soon transition accomplished, but that didn't happen. But we still need their help, and, and, uh, it would expedite things if that help was forthcoming tomorrow morning. Perhaps the board and the council directly asking that would do some good in their mind.
So, so Mr. Mayor, the council, um, just wanted to chime in, I'm not sure if I'll have time later, but, uh, I had listened to the, to the board members, I've constantly been over of the hospital board meetings, uh, I've also, you know, kind of shared my thoughts in terms of what I think is right, uh, in terms of what we can do as a council. So there are five things that I wanted to, uh, put out that for us to discuss. Um, one of them, and our list of them, as, as the mayor will decide how we can go, uh, we'll pull them with them. The first one is I'd like to, to just ask my, my fellow council members to once again consider signing the letter that would go to the state auditor. I'm very happy that things have changed in Mr. Mathis's mind in order to do that what he's done, uh, but I think that, uh, we as a city council also need to chime in and strengthen, um, the ask, you know, I've worked in Sacramento for many, many years, and the more you ask, and the more you, you pinpoint the support, you'll get it. So the first thing I'd like for us to do is once and for all, vote as a council to ask the state auditor to audit, you know, the hospital's books. You know, last time we talked about bankruptcy, chapter nine, that has nothing to do with the construction bond, it has nothing to do with other operations, so I think it's, it's prudent for us to stick up for our neighbors, uh, people that, that we represent that are employees, patients, and taxpayers by asking for an audit. Second, I would be more than happy to make the motion to support the letter that was brought to us today during public conference, obviously with caveat that we, the members of Tulare City Council, uh, support this letter asking for, uh, support in opening the hospital. Third, um, I'd like to see if we can, through our staff, you know, the general city manager, to see if there's anything we can do to provide technical support for many of our staff, partners, or members, or any of the, any of the folks who work for us, to be able to provide some technical support to help the hospital move forward. Fourth, um, I would like to, um, uh, support Mr. Northcraft's suggestion that we as a council just make a statement that we implore, and we ask Mr. Benzini and HCCA to cooperate. The more they cooperate, in my mind, the faster we open this hospital, the faster we put people back to work, the faster we take care of patients, and the faster we protect taxpayers. So I would like our council to, even in a basic sentence, say, hey, we ask you guys to cooperate with the local hospital. And fifth, I'd ask the legal council for the board, for the hospital board, and I'd ask our legal council if there's any way that we can join in in legal proceedings. As we have no legal ground, I know that, but we can do an amicus brief, or we can do other types of things that could support the hospital's effort to try to get it back on track. So those are the five things that I'd like for us to consider. Um, I can do one of the motions, we can make a separate motion, but I think it's finally the time that our council step up and lead and protect our patients, our taxpayers, and employees of the hospital.
So before we go into any type of voting, or I'm not sure exactly how we're gonna handle those, um, five items, um, I just wanna extend our gratitude to the board for graciously accepting, um, our invitation to meet with us today. I think it's important that we come together in unity, especially after everything that has happened. Um, I believe that everyone in this room is here for the same reason, and we all can agree that we need our hospital. Um, and it's, it, and as Mr. Northcraft stated, going back in the past and blaming bonds and former leadership and oversight committees and council and new board members, we can't go back on the, in the past and point the blame, because we're not gonna get anywhere, anywhere positive with that. Right now, we need a hospital. Right now, we need to put differences to the side and come together as a council, so I'm very glad that we're working together. Um, we need to move forward with this, and, um, as I mentioned, right now, the important thing is to have a hospital. How can we get there? How can we, as a city council, help you? Mr. Xavier, you expressed that the proper way to meet in terms of writing a letter on behalf of the auditor was to meet. Um, and, and you're right, that was actually the proper way to do it. There's a lot of hearsay, and a lot of times, there's different boards that come together, and city council doesn't feel like we should step on anyone's toes if we're not the elected officials that govern that board. So, thank you, guys, for coming today, and, um, I think that, I can't speak for the rest of the council, but I think that we're all gonna work together to get our hospital running again, so I just wanted to say that to those of you in the audience that work for the hospital. Uh, my heart goes out to you, those that have lost their jobs, especially during the time of the holidays. I mean, it, we, my heart really goes out to you. Hopefully, um, this time turnaround, uh, thirty, sixty days, and maybe we can see something sooner than that, so that these families that have, um, suffered from the closure of a hospital can not be impacted, at, at least during the holidays. So, thank you, guys.
Before, before we, when we kinda decide what we're gonna do to support the audit, I'd like your board to kinda prove what support we want, and maybe our board will be able to, to do that. I have one more question, um, it's in regards to the recorded links on the Evolutions building and the adjacent property. Is that gonna present any challenges going forward, and what are the balancing?
Those are resolvable according to our attorneys that are looking at the best way to do that, and the quickest way to do that. That has to do with, uh, security for a large one, um, CMC, and it'd be ready to us to do the hospital, and, and, we, that's not a, a major obstacle, it's just something we have to look for.
Okay, so you, um, David Craig, you guys have anything?
Uh, uh, both, yeah. Yeah, so, go ahead.
Okay, I know, I called to ask you about what the plan is. Are you guys, the board leaning to try to reopen the hospital itself? Are they looking to have someone come in to finish the tower and run the hospital? Do you guys came up with a plan A, B, C, go back to, maybe three or four years to get the hospital open?
Well, we, we have a major plan A that involves Santee and CMC, and, and, obviously, that time, we're, we're, we had eight percent of that, we're working very hard on that. What's the rest of your question?
Plan B or C, Plan A?
I mean, I know you wanna, you wanna, I know you hope that the plan for the works is what you want to do.
We have, we have a great deal of interest, uh, throughout the state, uh, of people here, as, because they know we have, we have the resources, we have the success of a hospital. We're not a city of three thousand, seven, ten beds trying to do that. We have seven, three thousand people. And they give, give support, I think, and they, and the confidence returns that they will get quality care at their local hospital, they will return. You have a lot of doctors in there, who are, who are, whatever. They're anxious to come back, and if doctors come back, patients will come back, revenues come back. If, for some reason, our major plan alters, there are a lot of people that are very anxious to talk about, to work with, and, uh, accomplish the same thing that you can do with the same. to talk to the work place and accomplish the same thing that you can do with the insurance. So we do that by the way.
So Plan A involves the district and board taking care of the construction as soon as possible?
Our town is...
I've walked through this already.
Hey, I have to, I have to walk through the hospital.
You can do by yourself.
The tower is not getting the hospital open as it's trying to start right now. The tower, we get that on both this situation, we'll involve the community, all four of us are committed to the town development and transparency, we'll come up with solutions to the tower. But that's not, if you have a suspended hospital operation, what could be with the tower? It's not, it's not right.
Can you open, let's say, just the emergency unit? Can you open the hospital on basis?
There are eight, eight basic functions we have to activate. The library, the whole, the focus center, most of it, and going more than just emergency units. Actually, I think you were saying last night, we may not have to open emergency units. To me, that's the critical thing, the critical, all the safety, you've got to get that open system. Anybody in the audience having a loved one that needs immediate emergency treatment, that we're there for, involve any taxes for that hospital. It's not fair right now for them, it's a crap car, it's a mess.
Now, do you guys, do you guys have to go back through the process of hiring employees?
Well, the old board's contract, every employee is an HCCA employee, so in order to be employed by anyone else, then you have to be hired at that process, but that can be a fairly quick process. If we have access to personnel records of the hospital currently, some certification would require an OJ officer, and a lot of them, we have, and employees have been fantastic. They're injured through no fault of their own, and yet they are anxious and want to return to the hospital, and we don't want to lose that talent. We have a lot of talent, hopefully, as much, even some of the people that are already left, we have to defend that.
So if the DCC is going to continue to be uncooperative, and you're going to have to go back through the process of hiring employees, what is the situation with cash in the bank to actually open the hospital?
Well, that's what we're looking at. We don't even have a bank account today. So we have, every dollar that comes into the hospital gets transferred to HCCA every day. So a lot has to change. We do need some bridge money. We're looking at local foundations to get Evolutions open, we're looking at CMC to get this bridge money to the hospital. I mean, Evolutions never needed to close, they have much of a manpower. So that's not, that's not a major thing to get startup funds for that, because that money will flow right away. Hospital, if you go to the hospital today, it'll be six months before that bill gets paid, so it's a lot longer to, state, federal, and the bridge on separate as well. But we have a lot of that that we need our help, and that's why the community medical office is willing to help us bridge that, and they have different resources that they can accommodate.
Who has the access to the cash? If there's cash, sitting in the bank account right now?
DCC.
And if you open Evolutions next week, where would all that cash go? Where's all the membership money going to be?
DCC.
It's frozen.
Yeah, it's frozen.
It's frozen. I'm assuming that everyone's changing memberships.
All the government, the council, and the health people, and eventually, it's an invite going on.
Counselor, I just, I want to put a little emphasis on the need to reject the contract as soon as possible, because as soon as we get that, if access to the money that's coming in, it's all being swiped. We've got no control over where it's going, and we're going to need all the money we can get. The second thing, I want to put the financial importance on, on the state audit, because somebody's going to have to pay for that, and I suppose the district will have to pay for it, or we have to find out where the money went, how it was spent, so that financial burden is relieved with the state.
I believe the state pays the audit, that pays.
All right, well, and I don't know who's going to pay for the audit. I find it ironic with as much as this has been in the news that we have to send a letter to an auditor to come check on it, if you really think about it. With what I do for a living normally, which is not my ten dollars a month sitting up here, we deal with a lot of bankruptcies because we, we're the ones that liquidate them when they, when they're in bankruptcy. And I can tell you, those funds are not flowing into an account that can be used for sure, but you could actually reach back up to ninety days on any funds that have flowed through that account once bankruptcy's been declared. And I've seen it done time and time again, vendors were paid and had to give the money back to the, to the bankruptcy trust. So anyway, I'm willing to do whatever it takes. Anybody that knows me in here for the last two or three years, I said, if this deal falls apart, and I don't care what side you sit on the coin, we're going to have to work together to get it open, and we're all going to have to probably compromise a little more than we want to, and probably everybody's going to feel a little pain in their pocketbook at some point. But if you want a hospital, that's what's going to go with it. And the one thing, and I've heard Kevin say it time and time again, this community will come together for a cause. We've seen it time and time again. This might be the most significant cause that we've had to come together for, but I can tell you that if we don't work together and everybody wants to pull the wagon in a different direction, their job will become more and more difficult as time goes on. And it's been said here time and time again, but when I first got elected twenty years ago, Kevin was my city manager, and he heard me say many, many times, you can't drive a car if you're always looking in the rearview mirror. And Kevin said that tonight. You've got to check in the rearview mirror to make sure that what's coming up behind you doesn't run over you, but you've got to keep driving forward to get where you're going. It's time to drive that car forward, and it starts tonight with whatever, that you're here tonight for your asks. I can tell you, you could probably get just about any ask out of this council that you want, except financial help at this point, because quite honestly, we probably don't have the ability to do that. But we do have other abilities to work with you and are willing to do it, and so Jose has a few things on his agenda, and if there's more than that, it needs to come up before we end this little session.
So with Ms. Mayor, I think the board members, just listen to the five requested items that I brought forward and try to expiate this. I just wanted to see if there was any objection to the five. One was a letter to the state auditor. Two was a letter, the industry brought forward. Three was technical support, I mean, like human resources, you know, we have our human resource department, we have planning department. Fourth was the motion, basically some sort of a statement from us asking HCCA to cooperate with you. And fifth, if there was any legal, you know, you could join in and do an alibi or something, that would do so. So those are the five things that I'm proposing, and so I don't know if there's any objections to, you know, because I'd like to do those forward for both before we adjourn.
Well, the only, the only question that I would have was, is applying our staff to their call without, without...
That's why we're being a council. We do it for the chamber, we provide our staff time to the chamber, we provide our staff time to the act show, we provide our staff time to a lot of different types of things, so I don't see why, if the possibility...
Anything you guys think, help for?
So, because that's what we have. So I'm hoping that we can vote on this and spend with the sign, but I just wanted to see if there would be exceptions to the five.
Counselor, I have the five letters tonight, the other letters, asking HCCA to certainly raise the point, but I haven't really thought about technical issues. There might be things that we could talk to Mr. Graham. I don't think we'd be able to, I have maybe some technical help. You have a lot of different people, maybe we'll just ask a few questions. The amicus brief, that's a legal thing, I couldn't tell you.
And that's why I'd like to, as a council, to, at least have the council say, hey, you guys are talking with yourselves, and, you know, see if there's any way that you can offer support from the council, or a friend or a type of act, so that's pretty much it. If it can't happen, it can't happen, but if it could, maybe we can.
Right, let me just jump in briefly and kind of let you know. An amicus brief is something that would only be something available to us once we're typically at the appellate level or higher. At the superior court level, that's virtually unheard of. I've never heard of it being filed at that level, and certainly, we have to have an open pending litigation for that to be done. But there are other things that we could do in conjunction with the board's counsel, with, it sounds like CMC is assisting their council. If one of the issues is HCCA not being cooperative, certainly, we're not taking inordinate our time to join in a request or a demand for cooperation and sign to it if the council drafts to give that.
I appreciate that, that's why I'm not a lawyer, so thank you for that. So with Ms. Mayor, I'd like to see how we could vote on the four items, maybe take out the amicus brief issue, maybe work something else out, but penny that, one at a time? Okay. Well, I'd like to move that we, Tulare City Council, draft the letter and send a letter to the Calhoun Street Legislative Audit Committee requesting an audit for HCCA, construction bond, and other operations at the hospital. Will you make that motion?
For the process, what I want to do is, is make a motion. You guys okay that motion? And vote for it, or is it, just give me a thumbs up for this? Thumbs up for the letter? Try to have a motion on the letter?
Mr. Mayor, which being discussed up there being put in the form of a resolution for the city council?
Well, we'll begin as a form of a motion, and then...
So we have as a motion? We're doing one item at a time, so I guess... Just consensus. Right, just that you're... We're going to make sure they're comfortable with the process. So we have to thumbs up for the letter, a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
I'm going to say aye, but I, I think that might be a little incomplete. How far back do you want them to go? You might want to mention that. This goes back maybe twelve years.
Well, I think we definitely, the construction bond was passed in two thousand and five, two thousand and six, so that's one. And then the operations, I think that, you know, there's plenty of folks asking, when this audit, if it gets approved, because we still got to wait for the legislature to even approve it, then they will define the scope of the audit, and I'm sure you will work with the hospital on what that scope is. So there'll be opportunities, but for the most part, I'm asking for the audit of the construction bond and operations, you know, going back, whatever, whatever the scope is that is appropriate.
I think a simple letter of support and asking for the audit, and that's it, and then the...
Specifically, I want the bond, the construction bond to be specified to be audited and in operations of the hospital.
Right, and it's your motion, so we want to make sure that we have everything specific and clear in terms of what your motion is, but I would also ask that you include in the motion for us to be able to, to direct staff, including the city attorney's office, to be able to have contact with the board's counsel and those individuals, necessary because the format of a letter to request an audit is very specific, there are certain facts and certain requests that have to be in it, that we wouldn't necessarily have access to. So I would request that also include that.
I will add that to the motion.
I think we go back, I mean, I don't say the brief, but I think we go back to, let's pick a date, in my opinion, let's go back to when the first check was written to the board.
I agree. I think we need to go back as far as that...
See, I don't want to get caught up on dates, so whatever, whatever we work with the city attorney and the council, they determine what's the best scope of the audit. I want to go back to...
Does everyone want to know where half the money went, or where all?
That would be your motion.
And since your attorney's in here, and this is a good time to ask this question. Oh, well, maybe one of your advisors is in here, consultant. We want to make sure that a twelve-year forensic audit could take two years, conceivably, that we don't slow you down. Yeah, okay, so we just need to make sure that stays outside of anything that could disrupt the future, because, let me tell you, if you've ever seen a forensic audit, and I've seen them in the insurance world, they take a long time when they're tracing dollars.
Yeah, I don't think we're in that. And the audit is conducted by the Calhoun State Auditor, and they kind of know how to do audits. So I'd like to follow questions, Mayor.
So what do we decide? Do you need to... This is just a little... So all in favor of the letter, with the convenience to the letter to add legal counsel conversation? All in favor, say aye. Are they opposed by the same side? The letter's support passed, it's five zero, that's true. Other words, that clear?
Going back the entire time of the bond, correct?
Yes. So the second item I would like to move as the mayor of council is that we support and add our name to the letter that was presented today during public comment. Obviously, with the change that, you know, citizens of Tulare and surrounding communities, we, the members of Tulare City Council, and then whatever else is drafted in this letter is sent to the Calhoun Department of Public Health. So that'd be my motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Are they opposed by the same side? Say none, or is it...
And then, Mr. Mayor, council, I'd like to move that we, working with the legal counsel and city managers, come up with a statement, a paragraph, a sentence, that would basically emphasize this Tulare City Council's request of HCCA to be fully cooperative and supportive of the hospital board of directors in whatever transition happens to happen in order to open up the hospital as quickly as possible. So that would be the intent, however, it's written in the letter, in the statement, but we need a council to pass down to be supportive and smooth transition problem.
And that's a motion? And that's a motion for a statement or a letter of some sort to HCCA directly, or something published in terms of a release through media?
Well, if, well, anything we do is public, so we could also, and if we wanted it added as a media release, that's fine, but the point is that they get it...
But it's directed to HCCA.
Yes, so that would be my motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Are they opposed by the same side? Say none, or is it...
And that's the, Mr. Mayor, council, I'd like to request that we approve the city manager, any technical support that he can offer through human resources, through planning, through other departments, that the board of directors would consider very helpful in their quest to reopen the hospital, to address issues. Obviously, that would be the intent, for them to be able to dialogue with our staff if need to do so, so that would be my motion there. Would we provide technical support?
I got one question on this one. Whether the motion on the floor is the city providing some technical or questions to the staff, can we legally do that?
C.
If it's...
Well, let me give you an example. I mean, like, for example, we have over five hundred employees who are out of the job, and we've been talking about this contract that HCCA has that concludes, I don't know if it'll stand up to any legal muster, but there's language that says that if you work for HCCA, you can't work for the regional hospital for two years. I hope that doesn't hold up to legal muster, but if it does, then I think that you have an excellent HR department headed by an excellent HR person, that if they have questions related to HR, that they could ask. And I don't see any problem for them to ask a question and for us to support it. Again, on Evolutions, there is a parcel that's adjacent to that parcel, if there is concerns about it being sold, or whatever, not becoming to the hospital, if there is any way that we, as a council, we control zoning, we can rezone that property to help so it doesn't get sold. I mean, I'm just thinking out loud. So those are the types of things that we can do as a city, to provide technical support. Those questions may never come, whether they do, I want it to be helpful, I want it to be of source, and I want our department's staff to be able to do that. So that's the intent.
I'm not talking about funding, did you actually specifically said HR?
Right, so let me answer Councilmember Manley's question. As I understand it, the question is, the use of staff time, of course, equates to dollars and cents taxpayer funds. Those taxpayer funds are city... Those taxpayer funds are city funds, not necessarily hospital board funds, and I think that's where your question lies at that accurate. Okay, so in terms of the fact that our staff time does equate to some amount of money, you, the city council, have jurisdiction on how to spend the city's money and taxpayers' money, or the elected officials that are entrusted on how to do that. Certainly, if there's a vote, with the understanding that it may include the use of some staff time, I would not suggest it be something that's open-ended and never comes back to you. I mean, we can't justify spending a full-time person, but I don't think that's what Councilmember Sidal is suggesting. I think if he's suggesting that we just accommodate and provide reasonable support in terms of answers to questions and things of that nature, and bring anything that's significant amount of time back to council, that would be okay.
If it, if it helps you, if it helps you, if it helps you, we'll keep track of their time, we'll bill it down, and, just like we do with our act show, we get a bill for our staff time that never gets paid, but we at least know that we spent eighty thousand dollars supporting the act show through staff time. So if that's something similar you want, I have a problem with that. But a five-minute phone call, a ten-minute meeting about, hey, how do we proceed with HR, how do we proceed with this, I don't think you'd be making.
And we would want to definitely track it, though, just for our record keeping purposes for the city. We need to have that tracked, because there is an amount associated with it.
I'm saying two would be difficult.
And I'll second that, but I think they're underestimating your abilities over there, guys.
And that's my concern, is their, their requests that aren't coming from you guys, and it's not, I don't think it's something we need. I definitely don't want to tie our city employees who are hospital, an outside agency walks in the city hall and says, we have a resolution that says you have to work for us. I think the consensus here is that we all want to work together, and especially this council and this city, everyone in the city with your board. But that direction has to come from your board. And we'll help you any way we can, but we can't help you and put any of the city, or any of the city employees to the points of where they are obligated by a resolution that they have to work for the hospital. And then there runs an issue, when do they work for the city?
Well, I just want to be clear, I'm not asking them to work for the hospital. I have full faith and confidence in this judge, and they're not even using the council or our staff. So I don't even, I don't even mind going. I think it's just a matter of, we have a question, maybe the city's, where HR department can help answer it. Do you want to put a limit, Mr. Mayor, on how much they talk in one, five weeks? That's up to you. But, but the point is that I don't believe that they're going to take advantage of our staff. The whole point of this motion is for us to be helpful. You say yourself, what can we do to help? I got four thumbs up that they're agreeable with this, so I don't understand the issue.
So I think that the board has expressed that there is zero funds. With zero funds, you can't go very far. That includes staff and everything else. You need people to make things happen. So in a time like this, we don't have a lot of resources, but we do, what we do know, again, is that we need a hospital, which is the time to come together. So if it's staff, that we can point your way for resources until we launch off a hospital, I don't think that's too much to ask for, especially because there's, there's no funds going out from your, you know, you guys don't have a bank account. And, you know, hiring a manpower to make things move is gonna be nearly, you know, it's gonna be very difficult. So I think that we do provide staff or other functions, but I don't think it's gonna break, you know, the bank if we provide some of our staff as resources to get this going.
Can I, can I just make a observation, and then maybe help this out? What I think you folks need to do, and I'm not against saying that if you need our staff time, that we're not, every citizen in this room can call the city staff and get the information they need. You don't need permission to do that. The, the phones are open. But as you go through your meetings, especially over the next few months, as you're trying to get the hospital open, what I would ask you to do, just, just being a council member, if there's a need that comes, that you need the city of Tularity, you appoint one of your four members to come to the meeting and either ask to be agendized or call the mayor. And that would be the motion I would make. Call the mayor to get it agendized, so we can talk about a want or a need that you folks may need as, as we go through the process. I would go far enough to say, I, I don't think you have to come to a meeting to wait two weeks to get agendized. I would have you call the mayor or the city manager and say, I need to be on the agenda, and here's why, and, and you appoint one of you, because if you all four come, it runs you into a bit of a quandary. But appoint one to go and tell the city, this is what we need, or this is what we're doing. And maybe at least once a month, that one of you would come give us an update anyway in public comments.
So I'd like to call the question, the motion and the second items, would you second? The technical support that you did?
I, I do agree with David.
Well, I think, I think what motion is set, what's on the table, and second, we need to provide technical support. The staff is gonna keep the log of their time if they ever get a call. That's pretty much it, just asking for technical support.
So, what's on? I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Pass this by you. We don't need to vote on that.
And just, you citizens, every citizen, and we have to try. A lot of times, they want to come in and die after it's put on, but in this case, it's just over the mayor and the city manager, I think. And if they need to be on the agenda, I would ask that you make sure it's put on.
Well, I just want to make sure that we're not violating our own rules, because I've been had rules where anything on the agenda has to be going by this council. So I just want to make sure that you're not giving the mayor anything extra in the rules.
With the hospital board, they need to be on the agenda. It could be an emergency item.
I understand that.
We want to make sure that it doesn't take them two weeks to get to us, that they really need something done within two days.
I understand that, but, but I, you know, because we're going to be out of there, we're bringing this as a favor, they've been asking for the letter, so I'm just trying to make sure that, I'm sure we're trying to make sure that we follow the rules. I have no problem with anything from the council, yeah, that's all.
They can either put it on the agenda through the city manager, through the mayor's staff, they can request it to be put on, but they also can always come in, hold in communication, things like that. Please contact the city manager, the city manager.
Arthur North, Mr. Northcraft, are you comfortable with going directly to the mayor?
I have not forgotten how to request that. Mr. Mayor, I know you, you have a meeting, and so we, we're gonna be moving this one to thank all five council members and the staff for their task, their special support and actions. I said we've had our catastrophe as a community, but we are very strong. I think, I, I got emotional today, and one need, a commitment, our citizens of our communities to give us a bridge loan of a hundred thousand, a whole lot of evolutions. I think this community's gonna come together, we're gonna have a successful hospital, one that's our product, one that serves us, with our children and grandchildren. We're gonna show this county, this state, and this country, this community is strong. We are electric strong.
Thanks, Mr. Northcraft, thank you, hospital board. You guys have a meeting? All right, with that, we'll adjourn this meeting, we'll take a five-minute break, and we will recommence the city.